Okay, we're gonna start in just a minute. As we're getting collected here. We are gonna add two items to our agenda. I think everyone will be able to pick up an agenda in the back. One will be to set a special meeting of the village board for Tuesday, March 21st at 3:45 PM. The second one is going to be that we're adding is going to be to set a public hearing for Local Law C of 2023 regarding volunteer firefighters and ambulance workers and their property tax exemption. We're gonna set that public hearing for Wednesday, April 19th at 7:00 PM. Danielle, you ready? Bobby, you ready? Okay, I'm not ready, but we're gonna start. Good evening, everyone. It is 7:07 PM on a hereby called to order the March 15th, aware of the Ives, 2023 Meeting of the Village of Tivoli Board of Trustees. Would you please join me in rise with Pledge of Allegiance to the flag? A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. I would like to welcome Clerk Bruno back to her seat and chair. And we'll thank the Deputy Clerk, Morgay, Tyler, for covering, but hopefully you fill your booths. So how about a clerk's report?
Well, absolutely. 364 trash tags were sold. Two payrolls were processed by Treasurer Day, Ms. Bonnie Day. And I wanted to just mention too that the Deputy Clerk of Morgay, Tyler, and Bonnie covered many hours in the office as did Mayor Griffith. So thank you for all the coverage during my absence.
You're welcome.
And coming up next Tuesday, March 21st, from noon to nine, village elections at the firehouse. We have a sample ballot available. And personal absentee ballot applications will be accepted up through Monday, March 20th.
Thank you very much for upcoming events. Trustee Mangeri is not here with us this evening, but we have set a date for the Tivoli Children's Egg Hunt, which will be Saturday, April 8th, 1:00 PM to 3:00 PM. And this year, we're gonna do it over in the park where they're providing. There'll be a flyer coming out soon. Save the date for the egg hunt. Trustees, in your binders, we have two sets of minutes. We have February 15th, regular meeting minutes, and the March 8th, public hearing minutes. An interesting fluke of the calendar, the last three board meetings have fallen on the 15th of the month. It's weird. We're gonna break that next month. So February 15th, regular meeting minutes, March 8th, public hearing minutes. Is there a motion to adopt both sets of minutes? Is there a second? All in favor? Moving on to the treasurer's report. This month in the general fund, we spent $77,068.50 out of the capital fund, $11,812, and a grand total of $88,880.50. Eight, 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 zero, fifty. Is there a motion to accept the treasurer's report? Trustee Baldino, is there a second? Deputy Mayor, all in favor? Is there a motion to pay the bills?
Give it to that guy.
Moved by Trustee Schilling, seconded by the Deputy Mayor. All in favor? Okay, you guys are scaring me there for a minute. Good faith and credit to the village of Tivoli. Trustee Schilling, would you like to get the zoning report?
Yes. These are the activities for co-enforcement department for the above-mentioned timeframe, building permits review, five, building permits issued, three, been no complaints. No complaints investigated. Zoning property maintenance violations, seven, appearance tickets, zero, municipal searches, one, inspection, six.
Thank you, Trustee Schilling. While we're on the topic, we have been doing some enforcement on garbage cans, which since 2018, the rules have been this. You can, whatever, there's different haulers. You gotta know your hauler day. Most people's hauler day is on Thursday if you've got the blue cans. Green can people are Wednesday. But whatever day is your hauler, your cans can go out the previous day at 5:00 PM. And they're to be pulled back behind the front plane of your house, like not on the sidewalk, not in the road, not even in front of your house, but to the side. By 10:00 PM the day of collection. And again, this is about keeping the sidewalks clear for the primary function of traveling about the village and not just holding your garbage can. And obviously, with the snows we've been having, it does make it more complicated to plow and everything else. So please help us out, cooperate, pull the cans in after your materials are collected. At this time, we have a longer agenda than we've had in a few months, so we would love any public comment on agenda items only. Okay, proceed, and of course, you always get last legs at a family board meeting. So we're gonna begin. Trustees, is there a motion to set a special meeting for Tuesday, March 21st, at 3:45 PM? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? I wanna let people know the purpose of that meeting is because there are deadlines in the budget process. And Budget Officer, who's myself, has to give the tentative budget to the clerk by the 20th, which is Monday. And then she has to give it to the board by the 31st of March. And we don't have any meeting scheduled before then, so that's what that's for. Okay. Next, we have setting a public hearing on Local Law C proposed of 2023, amending Chapter 205, Article 3 of the village Tivoli Code regarding volunteer firefighters and ambulance workers. This would give our very valuable volunteers a 10% property tax exemption on their village property tax every year. They would have to have served for three years, and there are certain requirements about the number of calls you attend, a certain level of participation. The county has already done this for the same term as has the town, so we're gonna be consistent with our timeframe of service. And we would like to set this public hearing for Wednesday, April 19th, at 7:00 PM. Is there a motion to set that public hearing? Is there a second? Do a roll call, please. Deputy Mayor, Major? Trustee Baldino? Trustee Schilling? And also vote aye. Okay, next in our binders, we have the 2023 holiday schedule. This is a annual housekeeping. I was gonna say chore, but it's never a chore to talk about days off, so. Couple months in already, we've already passed New Year's Day, Martin Luther King Jr.'s birthday, and President's Day. But we still have ahead Memorial Day, Juneteenth, Independence Day, Labor Day, our favorite Eleanor Roosevelt Human Rights Day in Tivoli, which is March 9th this year, or excuse me, October 9th this year. Let's see, three days before her birthday. Let's find it. We can have disagreements because we're not pulling out our phones.
Is it carved into something somewhere?
Yes, it's actually tattooed on my chest.
Then we will continue with Veterans Day. There are actually two days on Thanksgiving, the Thursday and the Friday, and then of course, Christmas. So is there a motion to approve the 2023 village holiday schedule? Trustee Baldino, is there a second? Trustee Schilling, all in favor?
Aye.
Price is right rules. Okay, moving on, we have a resolution authorizing adoption by the village Board of Trustees of the village of Tivoli Local Law A proposed of 2023, amending the enforcement provisions of the village of Tivoli Building Code, administration law, and zoning law. We had a public hearing last week. I want to thank those of you who attended and especially for speaking in favor of the legislation. We think this will help us provide the services that are needed that I've heard for years, people want to see the codes in the village upheld. And so this will clarify who in the village can actually issue violations. There's no ambiguity about that, both the appointed code enforcement officer as well as assistants and deputies and whatnot. And it also expands who can actually be handed a violation. So you don't just need to get the property owner who may reside in Florida. It'd be very hard to get a hold of, but you can also serve it to agents, tenants, people working at a property if it's like a stop work order or something like that. So trustees, we've been over this. Is there a motion to adopt Local Law A of 2023? Is there a second? Second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please. Deputy Mayor, Major? Trustee Baldino? Trustee Schilling? And also vote aye. So that just became Local Law Number One of 2023. Okay, next up, we have. Authorizing adoption by the village Board of Trustees of the village of Tivoli Local Law B of 2023, amending Chapter 212, Section 212-7 of the village of Tivoli Code regarding speed limits. I'm very excited after 12 years on the village board to be at this point because during that 12 years speeding in the village has been one of the perennial and sadly entrenched complaints and concerns. You know, I don't know of a community that has fixed speeding, but obviously, if all communities didn't work on it all the time, it would probably be a lot worse than it is. So that was for, like Nasaire said, that's not gonna do it. Not doing it would be worse. Again, this was, we had a public hearing last week. Thanks for those who attended. And we've ordered 33 signs that are gonna come along and it'll take us a little while to get them up. I will do an announcement about when this actually is like in effect. Certainly shooting for April 1st, which interestingly will be the end of the winter parking limits as well.
Ribbon cutting?
Ribbon cutting. Park on the street, just drive slowly. Is there a motion to authorize adoption of Local Law B of 2023? Trustee Baldino, is there a second? People fighting over that one? Trustee Schilling? Roll call, please. Deputy Mayor, Major? Trustee Baldino? Trustee Schilling? And also vote aye. That is Local Law Two, 2023. And to implore everyone to follow the speed limit in the village. Red Oak PD will be here as they have been issuing tickets. And of course, if you don't drop your speed by five, that ticket's gonna be that much worse. That'd be an eight miles over, you're gonna be 13 miles over, and that's a whole other category of penalty. So, um, Tivoli's a cute place. If you drive too fast, go right through it, take your time, look around, say hi to your friends, and do the speed limit. Thanks. Okay, lastly, we have a single bunch of modification. This is for the old ambulance that was sold last year for scrap. We got $2,900 for that. And that needs to be moved out of the sale of equipment revenue line and over into the fire and rescue lines where it belongs so that that's part of their resources. So trustees, you see the account lines right there. Is there a motion to adopt the budget modification? Second? All in favor? Again, we have these brief special meeting on Tuesday, the 21st, at 3:45. And then our next regular meeting will be held Wednesday, April 19th, at 7:00 PM preceded by a workshop at 6:00 PM here at the historic Watson Peister Hall. That's also the annual reorganizational meeting. So it's a little longer. We have a lot of, we readapt our code of ethics. We restated all the committees and all the appointed officers, et cetera. And we will have our regular workshop on April 12th, 2023, at 6:00 PM. We haven't set it yet, but that is very likely to actually be the public hearing on the budget. But we are going to set that public hearing until the trustees have the budget on Tuesday. Moving on to trustee reports. Trustee Schilling, do you have anything to say?
I met with the resident, Phyllis Palmer, who was on the composting committee, and I got updated from her on where the committee was before Susan left the committee, left the board. I'm also setting up meetings with trustee, Rhinebeck trustee Bertoli, Brizzoli, and also the owner of Ozone to talk about different models of composting and see what could be applicable to Tivoli. So I will report back the next meeting with all this information from.
Great, thanks for taking that on, Bill. Trustee Baldino, anything, plus maybe the court report?
I'm gonna read the court report. So this month, we had a total of $830 in fines, $633 in surcharges, zero in civil fees for a total of $1,463.
Thank you very much. Deputy Mayor, Major, would you like to read the police report? Everyone's not here to go.
Okay, so for the month of February, this is the report totals from the police department. We had a total of 12 incidents, 17 uniform traffic tickets, five parking tickets, and one arrest.
Thank you. I want to remind everyone, we're about six months into our contract with the village of Red Oak Police Department. You can reach them at 845-757-0060. They both have scheduled patrols here in the village as well as, you know, come through on patrols. And I know that we are still, with the snow, we're still actually enforcing our winter ordinance, which does go until April 1st. Can't leave your vehicles on the street between 1:00 AM and 6:00 AM.
And for the love of God, stop parking backwards.
And stop parking backwards. So I'll actually, three tickets for that. This is court report. Yeah, yeah, so. And obviously, if you're ever having an emergency, 911. Okay.
All right, Tivoli Library, check them out online, tivolilibrary.org. There's all the usual awesome stuff. There's yoga story, there's mine on hookers who are meeting on Thursdays from 10 to 2. There are two workshops that I think sound pretty awesome. There's the composting workshop on March 30th. And then on Saturday, the 25th, there's a workshop called Make Crazy Waffles. I'll be there. As far as cool history stuff, there's a Zoom event that Historic Brennan is putting on next Wednesday night. And it's an author talk with a guy who wrote a book called Harvest of Dissent Agrarianism in 19th Century New York. And it covers, you know, New York State agriculture and the, just all the things that were going on in the 19th century, from the anti-rant wars to the range movement and the effects of industrialization. So again. Hey, I'll be there. Clarabont in, just, the Li Log should be coming out.
Still there.
It's still there. It's still there, ever since the British burned it and it was rebuilt. The fish that was on, it looks fantastic. And the Li Log should be out new soon, so that's all, it's really nice. The Tivoli Bays update. If any of you remember the movie Romancing the Stone with Kathleen Turner and Michael Douglas, and there's that great scene where they go sliding down this like mud waterfall. That's what the Tivoli Bays are like right now. It is, it's amazing. They, yeah, put on, put on your boots and go out there and collect some ticks. Because they are there too. It's really, it's, it's an amazing time to be in the bays. I love the bays, I love the bays. Come for the mud, stay for the ticks. And soon, the boat launch will be back out, and it'll be time to get on the water.
Excellent. Thank you. Well, there's nothing too small to crow about when you achieve it here in the village, so we actually have a doorknob on the front of this building again. The repair rate, 80% finished, but you know, that's a historic door. It's of an unusual thickness, and our locksmith had quite a hard time finding an adequately, you know, historical beefy depth. So this week, it's actually a hybrid of the old one and the new one. But when he gets the new pin, then it can be actually totally completed. But I'm already proud of it, so.
Stepping back into the 19th century.
Yes, the little drawer pole is.
Coming off.
Don't have to use it anymore. Similarly, slightly larger scale, we've been working really hard to get these lights working out on our parking lot. There are now two that work from a total of eight. So there's sunlight, which is great after the long dark winter, and we're gonna keep working on that. And I think to save the cost of replacing them all, we'll get the fixtures, and then TPW will paint them because they are, they need a paint job.
Can we call this part of the meeting the Small W's?
Sure.
Small Win.
It's Small Wins, yeah. I mean, it's probably half my day every day. Moving up in scale. There are throughout the village, I believe, 13. I call them zombie poles. These are old utility poles that are currently tethered to new utility poles. You may have seen them. My favorite one is in front of Wins, which is like, there are bores and bolts that, you rubble. It just looks beautiful. So the way that process works, Central Hudson comes along, and they put in a new pole, and they move their electric wires over. Those are the topmost ones. Then they don't talk to the other utilities as long as possible, I think. Sorry. So after reaching out to Spectrum and ultimately Frontier, I've gotten in touch with Frontier. They are six months from getting ahold of them and then telling me that, yes, these are their poles. They're coming on Monday. And all next week, they'll be pulling out the zombie poles, which in the industry are called a double wood. So there's gonna be some crews on Broadway, Montgomery, all around. And if, it is funny. So watch out for those crews. You know, they're gonna have some heavy equipment in the middle of the village and whatnot. And I'm also grateful to Frontier because they are going to let the village keep the old poles. And we may have uses for those such as, you know, kever tossing, that sort of thing. Okay, I think that's it for me for now. I have something to talk about at the end, but let's go to the public comment for a while. Thank you all for being here tonight.
Are there seriously tins already?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I just lost the dog today.
I was like 500, no, I don't know.
They had a great, they had a great winter, right?
They did the bays too. The cats was over there every day.
We forgot our costumes out.
We were thinking about doing some kind of a, this was a more of a unofficial discussion that we've had with you, Emily, about doing some kind of a more chill community engagement right before the big meeting in April.
I'm sorry, I have trouble hearing you. Sorry.
We were discussing earlier, a couple of months ago, doing some kind of a more chill, informal community engagement thing right before the big meeting in April to get more people into the meeting room. So it's not just like the big controversial public comment times when people come in here. And that might be a good time for people to begin to kind of get involved and just be here. So we're talking about maybe doing a community dinner, some kind of thing, maybe a legion or something like that. I'm not saying you have to spearhead it, but I just kind of wanted to hear your thoughts on it. Maybe something, if we could get, I don't know how the repairs are going at Legion, we could call them and like check in. But if we could get people there, maybe 10, 20, 30 people maybe, if we're lucky, and then we could just kind of shepherd everybody up to the third floor.
Yeah, you know, let's go for it.
This is the biggest public, you know.
Well, let's recall, we are, it's pre-pandemic.
We used to, people used to come to the.
The 80 people in here.
And it was amazing.
Cool, speeches and.
And cake and scanning room.
So, but you know, I think everyone's gotten used to something different for the last few years, so they might need a nudge, so it's not a terrible idea.
I mean, other than that, are there other gadgets? Are there other elements of the meetings you stop hold that you can sort of move up to people to be like, hey, come back to it? Is it, is it? Cake is generally a good draw.
But we have sign up front with this cake.
Cake, nothing else, yeah. It's like.
No, at the end of the meal.
Yeah, you have to stay all the way through.
Yeah, you know, we were in a different sort of place than we have been, but it was actually a tradition which I didn't embrace. I mean, I did it, but inherited from predecessors who liked to grandstand a little more than I do. The state of the village address, I gave many, you know. So anyway, yeah, it used to be more of a, an event.
I'm just wondering how we as citizens can draw on that kind of like, we're here for y'all.
Tell to go.
Tell them to go.
Been trying. Every week is for you guys, every week.
Well, you know.
Today.
Attendance at a village board meeting is always a bit of a mystery. You know, it can be lots of reasons either. Folks are so jaded and apathetic and such content that they won't come. I don't think that's the case so much here in the village. Sometimes people are going about their lives and they're feeding their kids, and they, you know, trust us to do our jobs and let them know when there's something really dire, and we try and let them know. But most of the time, we're accepting the treasurer's report and, you know, a period of minutes. Maybe they have better things to do with their time. We're serving to do that on these Wednesday nights. And, you know, sometimes, you know, it would be nice to get back to having more people here. And we used to get our citizen awards. I mean, in all honesty, in the absence of that prep that I used to do for those, it filled right up with all sorts of other things which are in the village interest, like all these grant applications and whatnot. But I don't know how much I'm gonna pivot in time for next month, but if, if you all do something, that'd be great. And bring more faces in here, and I think we will at least get cake. I promise you, great.
I already said I would get the cake.
There, you promised, you promised we cake. You promised we cake.
I promised you cake.
So, you know, and then, you know, we'll see where things go in the coming years. But I mean, boy, when Malinara used to do, you were there, Boy Scout Color Guard, Citizen Awards, all the Oaths of Office. Everyone just got real life, takes their oaths, and it's pretty sweet and pretty nice. And then a big juicy meeting with all the reorg stuff, so.
I think that was in the days before pervasive internet.
And then we have cake, and everyone will leave, and then I do the save the village.
Right.
Is this something that we could collaborate a little bit with in terms of just like, I don't know, like making posters, posting on their page, that sort of stuff? Because I feel like it's just coming from individual citizens, it's one thing, but if it's coming from people who like work in this building or.
I mean, it's really for us to advertise our own reorganization meeting, I think.
Right.
So, I mean, it's certainly every member of the public, every citizen, every member of the public is, you know, can do as much as they want. But I think, yeah, I don't think really like getting the library to do posters just to wake up, but, but it sounds like I might be seeing it tomorrow for something, so we can talk more. I have a couple of things that I want to talk about. Is there anything else for public comment? First thing I want to talk about is a really exciting effort being undertaken right now. This is the Red Oak Community Center and Red Oak Responds, two great organizations in our area, have engaged with the Hudson Valley Path of Progress to do a community needs assessment. This is comprised of a survey, an online survey. I sent out an email blast today with the link to the survey. They have a lot of portraiture. Here's a bilingual poster that they have around. And this is a copy of the survey, which you can take online. can take online. Red Oak Responds and the Community Center want to try and get a very accurate picture of all sorts of needs in our area. This is going to cover the town of Rhinebeck, the town of Red Oak, the village of Rhinebeck, village of Red Oak, village of Tivoli. So even though most of their literature doesn't say Tivoli, we're used to that, but on page one, it does say, in which community do you live, and there's village of Tivoli, so everything else is Red Oak. So the questions include, you know, where do you live? How long have you lived here? Do you use the internet? Do you have a reliable telephone? Are you a veteran? Do you have health insurance? Are members of your household insured? And, you know, this whole thing is anonymous, so hopefully people will feel comfortable sharing their actual needs, and then Pattern for Progress will pull this together, share it with Red Oak Responds and the Community Center, and then they'll be able to actually develop some targeted, thoughtful, you know, it's like, is it really, do more people need phones? Transportation, housing is in this, so I really commend them for taking this on. I know most people in our communities would like to help everyone in our communities, and sometimes you just don't know exactly who or what, who's, who needs what, so I hope this will help and we'll get the results. Yeah, I mean, they'll have the results. I'm sure they'll share it with all the municipalities when it comes out. They're trying to get the survey answered by the 31st of this month, but I also saw that if the response feels strong, they might keep it going a little longer, but I didn't tell you that, so we could just do it by their preferred deadline. So yeah, if you have any other questions about that, I did send one out today. I want to remind everyone, there are new people signing up all the time, and the village does have an email list, and if you go to the Village of Tivoli website, halfway down on the left side, put in your email, and then you'll get the blasts, and that is my main way of communicating with public about what we think is important, and hopefully you do, so everything about this survey went out on that email today. Lastly, we have a tradition here on the village board. We haven't done it in quite a while, but when we lose someone special in our community, we like to adjourn the meeting in their memory, so we'll be doing that in just a few moments. Last week, the Honorable Howard Corky Clark passed away. He was at home with his wife Nancy and his son Wade, in his home where he's lived since at least 1980. Corky was a member of the American Legion. He was in the Tivoli Fire Department, and he was our village justice for 23 years, and he did pass while still in office, and I know that he's proud of that. It had been a hard year for him, but the last thing he was ever going to think about doing was stepping off the bench, so. Margaret Lemon, who was another wonderful Tivolian who passed away a few years ago, kept amazing scrapbooks that go all the way back to the 1930s, and every newspaper article having anything to do with the village are in use, and I knew that I had once seen a picture of a very young boyish mayor, Mark Mollinaro, appointing Judge Clark, and I said, it's got to be in one of those, so Rob and I went through these, and it's really hard not to stop and look at, oh, there's my bully from high school with his engagement notice. There was the time I got arrested, and all those people got married, and there's a lot of obituaries in these, and Margaret, you know, collected these for us. Her partner in crime, Jackie Zacko, brought them all in, and we keep them in that case back there. So if you want to come in and look at them, these are treasure, treat them as such, but it's fascinating. There's, there's an article about Bard College buys award manor. I mean, ancient stuff. So we were able to find that article I was talking about. I could pass this around afterwards, but there it is, there's, both these guys had a little more meat on them then. And this is, this is dated February 2000, and we went back and Rob checked, and Corky was appointed in January, so he passed 23 years. "Tivoli Mayor Mark Mollinaro congratulates Justice Howard Clark on his new position as Tivoli Village Justice. Clark, a chef and professor at the Culinary Institute of America, replaced Arnold Keyes, who retired after 24 years of service." So we have a nice tradition of these long-serving justices here in the village. I took many of my Oaths of Office for mayor from Corky, and I will certainly miss doing that with him and seeing him around the village. I know we are definitely thinking about Nancy and Wade right now. One of the things we're going to do is, what Rob and I discussed earlier, we're going to dedicate the bench in the courtroom to Howard Clark. Arnold Keyes, his predecessor, has the plaque on the door to the courtroom, but we're going to put a plaque on that bench in his memory, so.
There was just a nice line in this about when he was appointed, you know, there's like a dossier on him, but the quotes, he's quoted as saying, you know, "I hope to be fair. I want the village of Tivoli to remain a safe place to raise our children and to grow old," and.
He did both?
He did both, so.
It should accomplish.
Yeah.
Thanks for sharing that. And yes, he was a renowned professor at the culinary. I think he had a nickname about how taught he was.
One we can share.
Yeah, but, yeah, a lot of people were taught how to cook by Corky as well, so. With that, is there a motion to adjourn our March 2023 meeting in memory of the Honorable Howard Clark? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We stand adjourned. Thank you all.